Good morning, ladies and, good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I'm still in the morning. We are here today. It is Monday, June 27, 2022. We have a board workshop. The time is 1:01. Today, I believe that we have Ms. Gittens on the telephone. Ms. Gittens, are you online? Ms. Gittens, are you online? I assume that Ms. Gittens will be joining us. Ms. Giavinelli, I heard will be coming late this afternoon. And we have Ms. Patrica, who will not be able to attend this meeting. So moving along, we will go ahead and begin with the agenda review for July 28. And I will turn that over to Dr. Bernier. Good afternoon, Dr. Bernier.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, board members. This is the agenda review for the June 28 meeting. There were a few items that were asked specifically around consent agenda item with human resources, I-4, approval of the F-22 administrator's salary schedule. There was questions from a board member regarding how are professional assessments and performance evaluations different? That's a great question, and certainly there are, there are some minor changes between the two. Certainly, there are specific requirements for evaluation systems under the instructional personnel as well as with school administrators. In human resources, the terms like professional assessment typically refers to assessments used to determine career interests, suitability for employment. You can also take a look at what we've been doing in the past with like our 360 assessments that you'll get a presentation on mine today versus that aspect of using those skill assessments as part of a screening or selection process or in your own professional development versus the term performance evaluation, which then speaks to, directly to the, the final evaluation of an employee and their performance. So the question did kind of expand from there to say, can we eliminate and maybe substitute? We certainly can do anything that the board would like to direct us to do regarding terminology that we use. It may result in some initial confusion if we made the changes to call everything an assessment, and it would require additional clarification in the definitions portions of our employee agreements, but we'd be open to board member's suggestions.
Ms. Morgan, I know this is what's your questions?
Yeah. So the reason I asked that is because evaluation has such a negative connotation. And we are really all about professional development. And I was just looking for, I saw the word professional assessment, and I thought, well, maybe we can use that instead of evaluation because it just doesn't have the same, it doesn't resonate the same way now. But I do understand what you've said with respect to the difference between assessment and evaluation. So I'm not, so I don't, I don't think that that makes sense at all. So that's why I brought it forward. Thank you.
There was a, some under questions under one, which was how are professional assessment and performance evaluations different? So we handled A, which was the elimination potentially of the word performance evaluation and substitute professional assessment. And thank you, board member Morgan, for that. Then specifically under B, where was questions regarding employee shall acknowledge their evaluation. The acknowledgement of a final performance evaluation rating and the recommended reappointment status actually is done through PeopleSoft. So that's how that's done. So that's how the employee acknowledges. I think it's very important for me to set a tone also, since this is the first opportunity I've had. I, while you can acknowledge evaluations electronically, it would be this superintendent's expectation that every employee who is acknowledging an evaluation has already had a face-to-face meeting with their supervisor to go over that evaluation. And at no time should an evaluation be pushed across electronically without having covered that information with the employee.
Ms. Gittens, is that you?
Hello?
Yes, Ms. Gittens, we hear you. We're, okay, so, thank you. And so we're on the agenda review, okay? So we're going to go ahead and continue.
So the letter C of the same question was, are Economic Research Institute numbers adjusted for local economic conditions? Economic Research Institute or salary assessor information is filtered based upon geographic location, organizational size, in terms of the number of employees, annual revenue, and industry standard. So they are adjusted, but for benchmarking purposes, the district current constraints are Florida, public education, and similarly sized organizations in terms of numbers, employees, and revenues. So we really look to a larger field than just local economic conditions. We look more statewide in making some determinations as to what market value would be.
Thank you.
Line 33, repeat, paragraph 33, line 1, our academic tier interest and options under review. The committee was made up of several representatives from the Human Resources and Academic Services, and they worked to prepare this recommendation that included the following language, that Article 10.023B, academic tier, the supplement of $10,000 is available for all administrators assigned to Tier 3 schools. Payment shall be in two installments, one at the end of each semester. Updated school tiers will be published on the district website at the start of each semester. Assignment at a Tier 3 school is considered meeting that critical need. So Business Services requested the additional time and attention to assess the fiscal impacts and estimated return on this investment. If we have additional questions beyond that, I would ask Mr. Rothenberger, Rothenberg to come forward.
And that's exactly what I'm asking. Are we looking at these tiers and the options? Actually, you know what? It doesn't need to be answered here, but for point of information at a later date, that would be good to know.
Okay, fair enough. And finally, the last question was, well, it first started with a statement, attorney compensation is contractual, and that is correct. Will these contracts be subject to the same parameters as N? The short answer is no. The attorney compensation is contractual. They will be brought through a different process, but they will be based upon the market rate. So there is one version for all of the employees in Schedule M, but specifically the contract status as a references has not been constrained by that second article, 10.022B, which states that pay grade M is based upon market rate.
Well, the reason I ask is because we have nothing in writing about how attorney, attorneys' contracts are compensated. The board's been caught in a position where they've ended up approving something without any basis for the number being brought forward. And going forward, I am very concerned that if we end up with an elected superintendent, we have to have very tight guardrails for compensation for virtually any position in the district. And so, while I recognize that you may not want to have something about contractual employees in the administrative salary schedule, I think that there is a need either in policy or somehow to outline what the process will be for ascertaining what the contract, what the contractual rate will be. Does that make sense?
It does. In that particular case, I'd ask for the same dispensation that you gave me to the last item. I'd love to go back with Mr. Dotig and Will to spend some time making sure that we get very clear directions in that step-by-step process that you're asking for.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Can I ask, once you get that information, that it'll just be sent out to everyone? So we all have it then?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Ms. Gittens, did you have any questions regarding that? Ms. Gittens, I want to make sure that I'm not ignoring you. Okay, so seeing that, I think that was, that was the only question.
The only question's right.
Okay, thank you. So seeing that, we will go ahead, and thank you, Dr. Bernier. We will go ahead and move to the next agenda item, which is the superintendent's 360 assessment. And Dr. Bernier, I'm going to turn this back over to you again.
Thank you. I thought it would be a good idea to get me out of the way early today. So I wanted to take the opportunity, as you know, contractually, I had a responsibility to bring to you prior to July 1, an update regarding where I stood with the superintendent's 360 and its feedback process. We will use, I'll be covering basically five areas very briefly, since we just recently went through this. What's the 360 feedback? What is it? What's the process look like? Specifically related to mine, we'll spend a little bit of time, I hope, talking about the eight leadership approaches and the 24 practices that are associated with each one of those approaches. Talk a little bit about proposed next steps, getting a little bit of feedback, and then open up to your discussion so that I might get some direction for how to continue with next steps and great use of the month of July. So what is the 360 feedback? As you know, it's a system by which anonymous feedback is gathered about a leader from various people for whom they work, provides information about leaders' competencies, behaviors, and working relationships. For superintendents, generally, the feedback is gathered from board members, direct reports, key district leaders, principals, and other stakeholders. That'll be something we work on together in our one-on-ones to think about who some of those individuals are. Clearly, all of you as a board member will have that opportunity. But as we talk about direct reports, key district leaders, they may not be people who are direct reports to me. They may be other individuals within the organization that you believe have value and voice, as well as we look outside potentially to some outside stakeholders who could provide us an outside perspective, not just an internal one. Again, as we've said before, professional, this is a professional development tool. It's a chance for an individual to learn more about themselves. I really appreciated our last conversation, the idea of a blind spot. Sometimes we believe we communicate and talk to people in a certain manner and means, and then we have this opportunity to find out that maybe we do not, which brings us back to the feedback process. The idea here is, right, this goes a full 360 degrees. You go out and ask questions, people respond, I respond, and then I get the feedback from everyone back to me, and we make the comparison between what I believe and what other people believe about me. Again, we identify the appropriate stakeholders. We will send an email to the responders sharing the 360 process and what's required. A non-link will then be sent by an independent third party to each person who's, who's asked to provide feedback. The questions should take, depending on the number we settle on, about 20 minutes to complete the survey. I will also receive the same link to the same questions so that we're comparing my self-assessment with those who work in and around me. And finally, the responders will have about two weeks to provide that feedback, and after feedback is received, a consultant will process the data and a detailed report will be generated. Again, the importance here is the independence of the superintendent to ensure that the data is collected away from me and provided back to all of us by an independent third party. The consultant will review the data with me and discuss strengths and areas for improvement, and then I will communicate with the respondents who provided feedback and share the learnings and commitments moving forward, and I get more specific in the following slides. And specifically with this one, this is a group called the Lustig Group. Andrew Lustig is a, lives up in the Clearwater area. He's been doing this leadership work for a number of years. His work is around eight leadership approaches, and then each leadership approach has questions about three specific leadership practices that lead to this. So we're going to leave that, Denise, you're perfect. I'm going to leave the slide and the, the language slide and show you the diagram, and we're going to start in sort of the lower left-hand corner under being deliberate. So deliberate is the leadership approach. So you'll see in large, bolded capital letters, you'll see the various eight leadership approaches from deliberate, humble, inclusive, affirming, energizing. But focusing on deliberate for a minute, you'll see that the practices associated with being deliberate are communicating with clarity, promoting disciplined analysis, and providing a sense of stability. So those are where the questions will lie that will create the feedback to how well an individual taking the survey and receiving the information from the people who take it on their behalf, how well that person is at being deliberate as defined by those three standards. You can look at humble, inclusive, in some cases, there are, there are, in all cases, there are three specific areas under each one of those larger categories. So there's eight leadership approaches that'll be examined, and the 24 practices make up the pie slices that support each one of those areas. So proposed next steps, we'll be receiving and then have the opportunity to review any questions related to the approaches and practices. We will have some limited ability to develop any additional questions as you review. I see the month of July as an opportunity for us to do that. In August, we will get the 360 survey formatted, and we will make sure that we talk to the community and to all of you about what the feedback process will actually look like. We'll also spend some time in August determining the critical stakeholders for that feedback process, clearly all of you. But again, as we mentioned, there may be some district leaders that are not direct reports of me that you would like to have included, and I am wide open to that feedback. Late September, those identified respondents will be contacted and will begin the 360 process. That'll approximately last about two weeks. And then October, the 360 process will conclude. The data will be gathered and reported both to the school board and to the public at a public meeting. The critical component, and you may say, why so late in September? I've spent a lot of time talking with Andrew Lustig, doing the research behind this. His recommendation is right now for me to complete a 360 in July probably would not have great value or merit. Even coming into August, I will still be meeting, the entry plan will be fully underway at that point. So late September, and he's even a little concerned about that date, but I told him contractually, we didn't have a choice. We will do this so that we have it ready for you prior to going into my first annual evaluation in November, prior to the board changing. So those are my proposed next steps. I'm open to all of those, and I will turn it over to the board for any questions and any discussion, because I've made all the comments I think that you would want to hear from me.
Okay. Ms. Vaughn?
Yeah, I'm trying to understand humble and maintaining composure. I almost feel like, first, first of all, maintaining composure might go somewhere else. It doesn't seem to pair with the modesty and being fair-minded.
What are your, what are your comments on, on that, Dr. Bernier?
I will tell you that the research is clear on composure. People who are humble are less likely to become rattled and lose their composure. There's some research surrounding that. I would have to defer and get, get some additional research information from the experienced researcher who developed this instrument in order to be any deeper than that. But people who are humble tend to be more open, more transparent, more willing to take input that sometimes other people would become angry or upset or aggressive about. So I've seen that research, but I will get you the actual documents. And I think when we actually look at the specific questions under each one of those, I think we'll get a better feel for why that particular category is there.
Okay, so in other words, as opposed to somebody who's very egotistical and thinks the world revolves around him or her, that becomes angry easily when?
That would be the other way of describing the other end of the spectrum. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, it just didn't, yeah. I was just questioning how, how it fits in. That makes sense, what, what you said. But I don't know, you know? I'm not the one that spent countless research hours on, on this.
Neither, and let me be clear, I'm not the expert here either. I certainly will take that question back to Dr. Lustig.
But certainly, no, certainly, it's very important maintaining composure. It just, to me, at first look, it looked like an odd place to put that particular parameter. Anyway, just, just curious about that one.
Ms. Gittens, do you have any comments? Ms. Gittens, are you with us?
Yes, I'm sorry, I couldn't find my muted button.
That's okay.
No, I'm fine for right now, and this is just the first round through it from what I understand anyway, so we will have other opportunities, correct?
Dr. B.
Yes, that is correct.
Thank you.
I, I really do love that, the maintain composure, because I do that every day. So I think that one is really special, the one that you brought up. I love that.
Oh, well, yeah, I think it's absolutely important to being on there. I was just a little puzzled on how it fit in with humble and the other two things that were mentioned with it.
Thank you. Ms., I'm sorry, Ms. Fisher?
Yeah, I just want to say that I really appreciate this detailed explanation, explanation of the 360 feedback process, and I particularly like the eight leadership approaches and having those broken down into practices. I think that's going to help us fashion questions and really have a, a comprehensive look at professional development.
Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Morgan, did you have anything?
No, I don't. Thank you.
Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and you know, and thinking about composure, it's, and some of the things, we're going to have to have a discussion as to how that's evaluated, because it can be very security. So I look forward to further conversations on personal character and how we can, how that's measured, if you understand what I'm saying?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Okay, seeing, Dr. Bernier, did you have anything to elaborate on this?
No, ma'am, just if there's any feedback regarding next steps, that would be the only thing I didn't hear. So in, in the midst of no change, we will proceed based upon that calendar outlined in the presentation.
Okay, so if, if anyone did have, do you have a timeline that you would like to see? If anyone has any other comments to share, and those who are not here, like Ms. Patrica, as well as Ms. Giavinelli, so that way we can get that?
I will make sure a copy of this presentation is placed on their desk, since they were not here. I know it's in board docs, but I'll take the additional step with a post-it note from me asking if there's any feedback, because I really do want to get started in July with Andrew. And I do not be surprised if some of what's scheduled for August, I'll try to work ahead so that we're, we're in the best shape possible moving into the fall. Because I assume probably very correctly that once August starts and children return back to schools, there'll be less time for this type of work, because the more important work will be out in the schools with our practitioners and our amazing educators and our children.
Yeah, and I do say, I do note that it does say July, but I didn't know if there was like a, a date. I think we'd do better when we have a date, an actual date to give you back. So do you have a date in July that you would, so that way we, no one can say that, oh, we didn't realize what the day was and?
Well, a sub-bullet to July would be to review and develop any questions related to approaches and practices. The first thing would be to get those questions from the consultant, make sure those are provided to all of you. At that point, there would be specific deadlines. I was thinking more in the broad buckets of July, August, late September, and October, if that timeline was amenable to the board. I think that that presents the best method for not only developing the instrument, but at the same time giving the staff enough time and the community enough time to meet and interact with me multiple times.
Perfect. Thank you. Is there any other comments regarding the 360?
Thank you.
Ms. Gittens?
No, I'm fine, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Well, this is fabulous. We are moving on to the next agenda item, which is Policy 2.35, student publication, and that would be Ms. DePree Bruno.
Okay, let's see how we're going to get this up on the screen for you.
Do you need help from?
I think we'll need help, please. I know that it's in the drive to put up. It's 2.35. Thank you very much. I've received some very good comments from board members on this policy. Oops. Can you hear me better now?
Yes.
Okay. I received some very good comments from board members on this policy, and I'm just going to go through them very quickly. One board member asked a very good question, who will determine whether it's defamatory, libelous, obscene, and the rest of the paragraph in line 28? So remember, this is the 30,000-foot view. This is the governing document, and then the administration is going to work on the actual process and procedure that goes along with this. That will be in the process and procedure. But just to kind of give you an outline, we're looking at the teacher reviewing it, then going to the principal, and then going to the appropriate individual in the district office if it continues to be an issue. And this could also go to the board as what happened in Seminole County on, on the yearbook issue. So that's, that's the gist of how that would operate. Another very good question was with regards to how would this impact cheerleading and other group chairs? That's a very good question that's going to go back to the team to be able to evaluate and see how that would fit in, because this does talk about performance. So this is one of those questions that we will address further. There was another question with regards to line 45, which addresses speaker. The question is, who is it that, when we say speaker, is being addressed in line 45? And that's going to be the, the writer or the person who's speaking the words. And then the other question was with regards to line 50. What are we looking? What are we looking at when we are saying immature audiences? Is there a specific legal terminology or legal definition of immature? Not necessarily a legal definition of immature. This is going to be something that would be left to the principal and go up that chain of command. There's actually a case that's very on point, Hazelwood School District versus Colemeyer from 1988, where a principal had some concerns about what was being published in a student newspaper, and that principal, even though it was a high school, felt that some of the discussions with regards to pregnancy was not appropriate for the audience. So these will be things that will go in line with the obscene and the other things from line 25 that will go up the chain if there's questions in terms of whether or not this is appropriate for that particular student audience. And then there were some questions with regards to prejudice in line 50. I got that from two board members. I did reach out to staff. We're going to have a discussion about it, because I think the way that it's worded there is not past tense, so we're going to discuss that a little bit further. We may change that word.
I'm sorry, what line was that, please?
That's in line 50.
Oh, line 50, thank you.
So those were the comments that I received from the board. This was a pre-brief, and will be going to first reading hopefully in July with adoption in August. Ms. Fisher?
So thank you for that. And so with Policy 2.24, which is an existing policy with statutory authority, how is this different?
So 2.24 is advertisement. So that gives us the guidance on whoever wants to advertise within the district. So it's mentioned in here because there may be, somebody may want to advertise in a yearbook, for example, or a student newspaper. This policy is completely different. This policy specifically talks about student publication, student performances, and really what it does is put in policy some cases that are out there, specifically Hazelwood, that allows the district, even though this is a student publication, the district, the administration, and at some points the board, still has an opportunity to direct what goes into that publication, even though there's a whole bunch of legal reasons behind that, whether or not it's a full public forum, non-public forum. So the cases are basically reflective of this policy.
So one thing came to my mind when I was reading through it, and that was when someone is responsible for making the decision whether it's obscene or out of order or not appropriate for juvenile audiences, or, you know. And that's going to be handled in the process document?
Yes. So, and that's the question, who's making this decision? Because my view of obscene may be different than your view of obscene.
Absolutely.
So there's going to be a hierarchy, if you will. So the principal will have the first ultimate authority, but if the students are still concerned, they can go to the next level, will be most likely the executive director that's responsible for that school. And if there's still concern, there'll be additional avenues. Ultimately, if there's concern, it all comes back to the board. So someone can come back to the board. But those are more of the operations of how this policy is going to be implemented than the overall governance, you know, arcing governance of the policy.
And then so at individual schools, no one at the individual school, other than the principal, is going to be...
I will say that before it even gets to the principal, it will be the teacher who's responsible for that yearbook or that student newspaper, whoever that teacher liaison is, that's the first person. And then normally, the principals review it as well, so then it can go to the principal and then move its way up.
Okay, and my last question is, I noticed that there is no listed statutory authority.
Because this really is coming from what we would call case law, which is interpretation of First Amendment rights to free speech. So there is a case that this really is based on, which is the Hazelwood School District versus Colemeyer from 1988. It's the United States Supreme Court case, and that case was specifically about students who sued their school district because the principal decided that certain things in the student newspaper was not appropriate. And so the kids sued, well, at that point, they were adults, they did sue, and the Supreme Court said, well, wait a minute, school districts are a little bit different. They can control some of these contents of student publications, such as yearbooks, such as student newspapers, et cetera. So that's where this is coming from.
Okay, and are you aware of other districts that have policies like this?
This is a Neola policy, so the districts who are using Neola, a lot of them do have this policy. And I will tell you that when the issue with yearbooks came up in Seminole County, Seminole relied on this policy in order for the board to make certain decisions regarding the yearbook publication.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Vaughn or Ms. Morgan? Ms. Gittens?
And I have a question.
Yes, please. Go ahead, Ms. Gittens.
No, I think you called someone else, please.
No, 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 no. No, there is no one else, so please, Ms. Gittens.
Oh, okay. My question is line 46, where it starts on 45 with the sentence, legitimate pedagogical concerns are not confined to academic issues, but include the teaching by example, excuse me, examples, shared values of a civilized social order? That statement, I'm wondering where that was pulled from, and then the rest of it, which consists of not only independence of thought and frankness of expression, but also discipline, et cetera, et cetera. Values of a civilized social order, where is that terminology coming from?
So that's just part of the way that the policy is written. So in Hazelwood, it talks a little bit about what can be included in how you base it, and it's not just based on academics, it can be based on other thoughts. So we don't want to limit the students just to academic discussions, but they can have, for example, Hazelwood was specifically about pregnancy and divorce. So they can talk about social norms, but if the principal or the administration or to the board feels that this discussion is not appropriate and reflective of the board's policy, it can be removed.
Okay, I, I'm playing devil's advocate here. From some of the comments that we have heard in the last several months, the verbiage, teaching by example, of the shared values of a civilized social order, I just feel like we need to be able to explain that or something, because it could... What is teaching by example? What is, and what is civilized social order? One person can say they're civilized, and someone can say you're not.
So that, thank you, Ms. Gittens. That is something that we'll bring back to the team for further discussion.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gittens. Good catch there. And is, do you have any other, any other comments regarding this?
You know, I do have one more.
Yeah, please.
On line 49.
Yep.
Ungrammatical, poorly written. If a senior class decides that they're seen because it's in, you know, so if it's out there and it's what they do, and they're saying that, you know, we be doing it. And that's what they choose to say. Can administration say, well, that's not grammatically correct, even though there's, you know, 50 songs and all kinds of social media saying, you know, the same thing? How do we deal with that?
Yes, administration can do that. That language is specifically coming out of the case. That is language that was used by the United States Supreme Court as one of the reasons that the administration or the board can go in there and decide that a portion or a piece of a publication cannot be utilized. So yes, it can go in there. I think that goes along as well with the shared values and things that you were discussing previously, that has to be buttressed. And this, again, will be something that will have to be outlined very specifically in the process document, and I'll go back to the team so we can vet that a little bit more.
Ms. Gittens?
I'm sorry, I was muted. Yeah, I just, I mean, I've been a class sponsor for junior class and senior class, and these things are going to come up when they're looking at what they're going to put on their T-shirts and what they want to be known for at their class. So I think, and I'm not saying that we can't do it, or it's not legal, I think that when it's brought out, though, and presented, we have to be very careful to present it in a way that everyone understands that it's not a law board saying to them, they can't do this or can't do that.
Before it gets to the board, there's a lot of other layers that will have to be addressed prior to anything getting to the board. But I do hear you, Ms. Gittens, and I'll bring this back to the team so that they can have additional discussion. The removal of that language, I would not recommend, because it is specifically coming from that U.S. Supreme Court case. However, as we are revising the process document or the guide on how this will be applied from an operational standpoint, that's certainly something for the team to consider.
Well, and that's the terminology that I think we'd be looking for, that this is not something that we in Lee County and our school board have come up with, and just defining that that is from, you know, the Supreme Court rule. And maybe have it, you know, a notation that that's where that comes from. But anyway, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Ms. Vaughn?
I understand what she's saying, though.
Yeah, I...
What? Go ahead.
I just had a couple comments, first, very quickly, on what Ms. Gittens was just talking about. Some of those things become almost idiomatic, the poor grammar, the, you know, they come into very informal speech, so probably wouldn't be ungrammatical. The thing that, you know, this absolutely considering a couple issues that have come up and are likely to have been in the past that we didn't know about, or in the future, it's important, but on the other hand, my comment is that I have just a little bit of a fear that this, in trying to, in, trying to think of the best word here to describe it, in trying to tell students and, you know, that they have First Amendment rights, I'm just a little bit afraid that we, as a district, are going to take that and put this bubble of fear around it because of the nature of our society. And one of the things that just kept coming up in my mind were student newspapers that really should, in a high school, not just say, we won the football game and the cheerleaders won a prize, or whatever, but should also have thoughtful discourse, the way any decent newspaper, you know, maybe not on the level of New York Times, but any good newspaper would have, and op-eds, and, you know, I'm... I know that we're going to have a process document, and there's going to be a lot, but I just wanted to say this as a comment. It worries me that this is going to actually suppress schools allowing, for instance, doesn't, you know, it could be a school issue, it could be two sides in a newspaper, book banning in schools? Yes, book banning in schools? No. Things like that, that relate to schools, you know, not just things like, should we have chili hot dogs or plain hot dogs? I mean, that's not a high level, but thoughtful op-eds, just putting it out there as my own board member comment, I certainly hope it doesn't dumb down high school publications and make people back away from things. And, you know, perhaps on an op-ed, it might be if you have something that's going to offend certain areas of the population, you do a pro and a con on those things. But I, this is very, very important, this policy, but on the other hand, I hope it doesn't backfire and make people in the schools afraid to allow students to really exercise their First Amendment rights.
Thank you, Ms. Vaughn. Your point is well taken, and the policy and as well as the Supreme Court decision takes that into account. That's why it says it's not limited to just academic issues. What Ms. Gittens was talking about before in terms of, first of all, in deciding whether or not something's going to be left in, there has to be viewpoint neutrality. So it's not just because I don't like what you're saying is the reason that I'm taking that out. That's within the policy, that's within the case law. In addition, it talks about not confining it to academic issues, but teaching by example, this is exactly what Ms. Gittens was talking about, but it goes to your point, teaching by example of the shared values of a civilized social order. The case law says that part of the newspaper is to allow students to be able to talk about what are the current events that are happening in their school. So that's where the social order comes in, which consists of not only independence of thought and frankness of expression, but also discipline, courtesy, civility, and respect for authority. So the court was saying that when you're going to talk about these things, you can't, for example, in this case, they were naming names. Well, you can't just name names and say that this person is pregnant, or this person had a divorce, or those kind of things. We have to be courteous and thoughtful and respectful. So that's one of the things that the court was trying to do. In addition, there are, of course, some of the discriminatory aspects and some of the other things that the court was trying to limit as well. So it's not to throttle, but to provide guidance to both, to the administration, provides what the board is expecting for the administration to follow, and what students can and can't do, and provides an avenue, if there is an issue, how to address it.
Right, and I appreciate that, and you're absolutely right, some of the examples that you give, because we don't want our student newspapers to be like, I don't know, I don't even know the, you know, the Globe or something like that. But on the other hand, my comment focuses on, I'm just hoping that in our district, we continue to allow our students to exercise their First Amendment rights within the scope of civilized discourse, and that we don't shy away from these things out of fear of ruffling feathers.
And that, I believe, is another very good point, Ms. Vaughn, because we don't want to throttle, that's not the point of this.
Right, right.
And it does address it in the policy as well, that students cannot be retaliated against, or they cannot be disciplined for exercising their First Amendment right. So that's in the policy as well.
But go ahead, Ms. Fisher?
So along those lines, then, on line 56, that's where that says that, but then it goes on to say, nothing in this policy, however, restricts the board's ability to impose post-publication or performance discipline related to a student engaging in the impermissible publication or performance of unprotected speech.
So the scenario would be, you want to publish something, and the teacher says no, the principal says no, you bring it to the district, district says no, and you do it anyhow. At this point, what happens? Or there may be some discipline issues that will be left to the code of conduct in terms of how that's regarded, but that's one of the scenarios, is if you continue to do it even though they told you not to. So they told you, don't put this piece in the newspaper, and you do it anyhow. That's where... That's where that would come in.
And then again, who defines what the unprotected speech is? Because although there are some examples given earlier on in the policy, I mean, again, it can be a matter of personal opinion.
So when, so when the team comes back and looks at this again, we'll make sure that we discuss safety nets in terms of the process and the guidance that's provided to the principals and the rest of administration for implementing this policy.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, because I was, my concern was, I mean, I, I understand we need a policy, was the performances as well. So this is not just about written. It is about what these kids are showing when we have these performances at our schools. So if someone is not agreeing upon what is, what the show may be, Hamlet or whatever that looks like, where does that, how do we allow them to, um, to be a part of the theater? I mean, it's, it's theater. So we're like stopping our kids from doing that now?
No, I don't think you're stopping kids from doing that at all. I mean, these are, remember, these are parameters. This is an overarching guidance to the administration. Here's what the expectations are. It is in line with law and this is how we're gonna follow it. So there, this is all, this is all this policy is doing. In terms of the implementation of it, how is this going to be implemented? The process, um, the guidance, that's gonna come from the administration as they are working on their guidelines for this policy. Dr. Daniel? I think Ms. Morgan has a question?
I'm sorry, Ms. Morgan?
So, so this is making me wonder, and I don't know how other districts do it, but should we be looking at policy and protocol at the same time? Because we tend to not understand the policy without seeing it in conjunction with the practices that are gonna be used. I, I just don't know what other districts do. Does anybody have any idea? Do other districts bring forward policy as well as drafts of protocol?
So here is the Neola process and also what our project team discussed. I'll, I'll start with that first. The project team's goal would be to have, once the policies are approved by the board, within 32, preferably 60 days, but it could be 90 days, to have the processes in place. Normally, the processes are coming after the policy. For Neola specifically, they are very hesitant in providing any processes because each of these policies will have, most of them, I should say, will have a process document that goes along with them as well as the form that goes along with them. They want to complete the policies first and then we will go through the processes. I've had multiple discussions with them on this particular topic and that's their preference. There will be some processes that will be coming forward because we're going to be enacting maybe about 10% of all of the policies prior to May 2023. And so hopefully, they will give us those process documents as well. But normally, generally speaking, the policy and then the process within a reasonable time afterward. Thank you.
Okay, is there any other discussion? Ms. Gittens?
Excuse me, I'm trying to quit here. The only thing is, what I, I'm just reiterating what I said before, is how we rule it out. Because if it's ruled out, um, saying correctly, that's not the word, but if we don't rule it out showing equity across the board for all those involved, it could get out of hand, um, later on with one side feeling that they have the ability to stop something and then we're always faced with, you know, looking at how we resolve this specific issue. So we just have to be very, very careful in how it's out in the public now and they know that we're still looking at it. And, um, yeah, we just have to be very careful as well and, and back up every single legalized way so that we don't run into multiple issues later on. But thank you for listening.
Thank you, Ms. Gittens. Okay, um, Mr. Prey Bruno, is there any other, um?
We have no other policies. I do want to, um, let the board know a few things. We are working diligently with getting policies out. Project team has been meeting, Neola's coming here, the 25th. There will be policies coming before you in July. These are policies from the 2022 legislative session. It's gonna be quite a few policies. I would say about maybe 15, 16 policies that are gonna be coming in. And then in August, hopefully, we'll have the final adoption. At least we'll be caught up with all of our policies and then, of course, work our way backwards. There's over 600 policies that we're going to be processing between now and May 2023, with the last workshop being April of 2023 because we want to do our final adoption in May. So there's going to be anywhere from 60-plus policies coming to the board on a regular basis. The first Wednesday of the month is designated as our policy workshop. Thank you to Dr. Bernier, who's allowed us to use that time. So I, I don't want the board to be surprised because there's gonna be a lot. There will be some policies that we feel, for whatever reason, necessitates adoption quickly because we need them. Hopefully, I'm hoping that's only about 10%. And then the rest of the policies will go through the review process with the board. Board gives feedback. Neola will be here to help facilitate the discussions about those big chunks of policies and then have the final rescission and adoption of the policies in May 2023. So that's where we are. And thereafter, by the summer, hopefully before school starts in 2023, all of the processes and guidelines that go along with those policies will be finalized by staff as well. So that's, that's where we are. So it's, it's a big project.
Can, can you say, you keep mentioning the project team. Who is the project team?
So each-
You've mentioned that quite a few times. I just want to know who that is.
Yeah, I did mention it at the last, um, board action meeting as well. Each division has-
I'm sorry, I forgot.
That's okay. Each division has what we're calling a Neola champion, a project team liaison.
Thank you, okay. I remember, I recall that. Thank you. Did you have anything else?
That's it, thank you.
Thank you for reminding me of that. Okay, so next on the agenda, moving right along, we have community outreach, sales tax projects, which is exciting. And this is going to be turned over to Suzy, Ms. Susan Millay and Mr. Ross. And Dr. Bernier, did you want to say anything about this before they start?
Madam Chair, no. I think these, these two individuals are fully prepared today. They have a great PowerPoint presentation for all of you and be interested to hear your discussion following their presentation on the current status of our projects.
Perfect, thank you. And Ms. Irma Lancaster as well. Whenever you're ready, guys.
Good afternoon, board members, Dr. Bernier and Mr. Prey Bruno. We're here this afternoon to talk about our, um, some of the ways that we are keeping the community informed of our sales tax projects and how their funds are being invested in our schools. Since January of 2019, when collections began, nearly $300 million has been collected and approximately $180 million has already been invested in our schools. 100% of our schools have received the benefit of, um, projects supported by the sales tax. And importantly, almost 3,800 new seats have been developed already with those fundings. We've realized about 3% increase in our seats with those 3,800 new student, uh, stations. And we've completed construction of two schools and five major renovation and remodeling projects are in progress. Our communications department's done an excellent job of reaching out to our community and keeping them informed. And I'd like Mrs. Irma Lancaster to give you an overview of those activities.
Thank you, Ms. Millay. Good afternoon, everyone. Uh, our communications plan was developed in early, uh, 2021 when we launched our first annual report for the sales tax that I'm sure you all received a copy of. This year, we decided to include some of that information in the impact report, which I know you all received a copy as well. Our communications included the redesign of the Change for Change page on our website to make it easier for our visitors to follow. It includes links to the overall dashboard as well as individual school dashboards. The page also includes links to our media coverage and video library. And we work to produce a new video once a quarter. As mentioned, we have our media coverage page in addition to all the press releases that we get on a regular basis with updates on our projects. We invite the media once a quarter to view for themselves one of the projects taking place at our school site so that they can help us tell our story. We also launched Sales Tax Tuesdays on our social media platforms, which is where we highlight a sales tax project, uh, on a Tuesday. And we do see an uptick on our website whenever we do that. Uh, we also prepared a general overview presentation of the sales tax that's been presented to several rotaries in our community. Our department also presents to the ISOC committee, uh, when they meet so that they're aware of the things that we are doing. And they have also initiated their own subcommittee so they can help us tell the sales tax story. And we do meet with business services on a regular basis to continue to brainstorm and come up with ways that we can continue this communication. And some of the things we're working on are school signage and also some advertising and sports programs, which Ms. Millay will, uh, share that now.
Great. To, the last two bullets here I just wanted to touch on quickly is we have engaged, um, FGCU's economics department to support us in a study of what is the economic impact of our sales tax having? Not just investing in our schools, but what does that look like in terms of jobs? And, you know, what does it look like for the visitors who are supporting our schools through sales tax, et cetera? So in the fall, we'll be bringing forward to you and we'll have FGCU here to report on those findings. And additionally, the Sales Tax Oversight Committee, ISOC, is very engaged in them being an advocate for the progress and reinvestment of these funds. So they have established a subcommittee and they've had a couple of meetings. And in the fall, they also will be bringing to you their communication plan and a presentation that we are jointly developing that they would like to take forward to the community. Any questions?
Ms. Morgan?
I, I would reiterate, the ISOC committee is very interested in getting the information out. Is there any way we can take the statement that they, uh, it was, I guess they gave it to the news press, editorial op-ed or whatever? Is there any way we can put that on the, right there on the, um, front of the web, website, webpage for, uh, for the sales tax? I mean, essentially, it's their endorsement as the working committee of what the district has done. And I think putting that up front, uh, and then, you know, maybe a link to the people who are on the committee, et cetera. But that would be helpful.
We can certainly do that, yes.
Okay.
Um, Ms. Gittens?
Go ahead, Ms. Gittens.
Okay, as a member of this board and one of the main things that we hear about, sorry?
About-
Can you give me a-
No, go ahead. You said, "As a member of this board and what we hear is..."
Okay. And, and what, I know what I hear a lot in the community, especially in this politically driven time, is, um, about the board getting along and being able to work together to accomplish things. And I say that to say, when, um, you mentioned that you're out at community groups and, uh, rotaries and different places like that, I just think that it would be, um, a unifying look to have the board members, especially four specific areas, that are presentations like that are being done in their area that we should know, not that we're going to take part necessarily, but that we should be a part of the group that attends the event. Because otherwise, we're in the community and the community is hearing one thing and attending something, but we're not involved in the, the rubber be thrown. It always comes back down to, well, why didn't the board? So I am asking that in future, that, um, the meetings and the things like that, that we are aware to decide whether we want to and not, not being obligated, but to be able to come to community meetings in our community.
Ms. Gittens, this is, that's a great idea. And I see this, um, subcommittee action of developing a presentation as a great springboard for us to develop a strategy for the committee to be presenting and for the board to be participating. I also see this, uh, the outcome of the ISOC, uh, committee, Communication Committee, to be a presentation that board members, excuse me, would be able to take forward in the community and deliver the presentation to your groups. So we want to reach as many groups as we can to share the great progress that is being realized and collaboration with the board is an absolute.
Ms. Gittens, any other comments?
No, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Ms. Morgan?
So you provided information at the ISOC meeting about the number of hits you get and the amount of time people spend, which I think is really, uh, of interest.
Sure, uh, yes. So we pulled the analytics for, uh, 2021 and to date, we've had about 10,000 visitors to the Change for Change page. What we found, on average, the time that visitors are spending are about a minute and a half to two minutes. One of the pages that they seem to spend more time on, which is very interesting, was the page that, um, describes capital versus operational funds, which really tells us that our public is interested in seeing what those funds are, what they mean, and where they're going. And that actually, they spent almost four minutes on that page.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, thank you, Ms. Lancaster. Now we're gonna go on to a different part of the topic and I'd like to have Mr. Frederick Ross introduce this topic.
Good afternoon, um, signage. Our maintenance staff was tasked with identifying some, uh, areas where we could put signs. Our goal was to share the information where our citizens and our taxpayers are, you know, at their, on their homes, their, their, where they're going to schools, their, their businesses that they travel to. So we, um, chose 17 sites that are highly visible along some of our major arteries, major roads. Example of that, Calusa Elementary and Middle, right there on, uh, Del Prado Boulevard, very highly visible. Similar, uh, same with, uh, G Weaver Helps in, in that commercial plaza shopping center with a, a lot of cars traveling in and out. So wanted to get that message out. Um, have chosen a, a two-panel V-shaped board for, you know, visibility kind of coming from both sides. And today, uh, our next slide, we'd actually like to show you the, the actual sign that we're, we're looking, uh, to utilize and, and get feedback from you, um, today.
So as Mr. Ross stated, we're looking at putting these large V-shaped signs on 17 of our school properties and this is the design that we'd like to share with the board and obtain feedback before proceeding.
I think that, and if I, Ms. Gittens, you can correct me if I'm mistaken. I, I think that, that everyone has been asking about where we're building. So those buildings that we're, these are great locations because it's high traffic for, absolutely. I mean, that's fabulous. But as far as when we are, um, building a project, if we could, I know they spoke about the thermometer, you know, where's that money coming from? How are we doing that so that the community knows that this building is, uh, a monastery is being built by this and where those dollars are coming from? So driving past that, you know that school's not there yet, but it's coming. And I, unless-
Thank you for the lead-in to the next slide.
Okay. Anytime.
And that was, of course, my thing that I keep bringing up, that how can we put, uh, specifics on there? I mean, an overall number or something?
All right, so a couple-
That's why I was sharing that, because I know you do bring that up, Ms. Gittens.
So, so a couple of things. So this is the sign that we're looking at having in front of those 17 locations. And then we would also have at each school a list of the specific projects that were funded at that location. at that location. So for a parent that says, "Hey, I saw that sign on my way in," or even somebody driving by that says, "Show me what's been done at your school," we'll have that information readily available at each school with site-specific projects. We've heard you loud and clear that you'd like to have more site-specific information, but on a drive-by, large font, it's hard to figure out how to couple that. So the idea that we've come up with is the large visibility followed by the backup materials at the school and on the website. So then going to Ms. Jordan's other question about site-specific signs. So we have, these fall into two categories. The first is every school about a year ago had received a two-foot-by-six-foot sign, the image of which you're seeing displayed here, which indicates that sales tax dollars are transforming this school. So those are predominantly at parent pickup lines or other highly visible locations. In addition, when we have new school construction and major renovation projects, what we'd like to do while we're also deploying these 17 signs, have a, have one or more highly visible and custom signs on each property, such as this one for Gateway High School. So we're envisioning this to be, again, a four-foot-by-eight-foot piece of plywood with this design imprinted on it, invisible from the major thoroughfares and, and remaining on the property during the construction period and even after it opens.
Okay, so for instance, Franklin Park, we know that's going to be taken down, so do we have a sign that's going to go out there so when people are driving up and down Edison or Ford, they're going to say, "This is going to look, this is great, this is going to look like this." So the community, all they're, it's a buy-in for the community as well, and they get excited.
Absolutely. So that is our goal, is to increase the signage and visibility, to share with you what is going to be on these signs. So with our major construction projects, we have it in our contract for the continuing contracting manager to support the development of this sign, and then all of our primary contractors would be listed on it.
Now, Karen?
Go ahead, Ms. Gittens.
Okay, and that sign would be Debbie Downer.
Don't, can you be Queen Downer?
A sign, and it says, "Tax dollars at work." I'm looking for some type of amount.
Yeah.
And even if we put down there an overall, and this is where, we know we're building a school, and here's our budget for the school, why can't we say the, at least the budget for the school? If I know that things change, and I know especially in this day and age, that figures change, but people are looking, when you say change for change, and tax dollars, and there is absolutely no number anywhere on any level. That's, that's the question. And I don't know how to do it, but I'm just saying, and that's what people ask about.
Yeah, so what, so what Ms. Gittens has spoken about was like the thermometer, like United Way, and a lot of the organizations use to, you're trying to get to that goal because they're trying to reach a goal with those signage. We already know that we have an X amount there, so I don't know how you put that there because we're not trying to reach that goal. We know that this is what the goal is going to be. Well, we hope it's going to be that.
So we've had a little, we've talked about this challenge at our ISOC meetings, and one of the challenges is as soon as you put a number out there, it's dated, it's stale, it's not accurate. So in our presentation materials in ISOC, we've adopted a dollar amount as of and a date. So if somebody goes and looks at the website today, the $299 million that I posted from last week is no longer accurate because that data is refreshed daily. So what we want to have is integrity in the information that we're communicating, and with the constant evolution of the dollars, it's a little bit hard to do that. So one thing we can come up with is, is the as-of date, and another thing that we could come up with is the supporting materials at the school that would have the dollar amounts with it as of a certain date.
But could you, go ahead, go ahead, Ms. Gittens.
And also, you say, even having that and then communicate that the updates are on the website. It will drive more traffic to the website for the update, but it will give them something. And I, I mean, you have to be living under a lock to not know that cost of building is changing and shifting all the time. So the people that I feel would be interested in what's happening with the tax dollars would not be even going to a website and saying, "Okay, this was us or whatever. I was building my house, you know, six months ago, and the price went up, so I get it. So let me go and see where we're at now." And it drives them to your, to the website for updates.
So the, the design that we have for the two large, the two V-shaped signs, I've displayed it here, I don't know if you can, you have access to it, Mrs. Gittens?
I'm looking at it.
Okay, it's slide seven. So at the bottom of that, we have the website that is dedicated, it has the dashboard, it has every expenditure by school. So, so really, this, this design here is being presented to the school board to kind of bang up on it. We included in our last round of reviews, it didn't have the website link on the bottom. So that was one of the pieces of feedback that we have, I think, from ISOC. And so now, this is being brought to the board, you know, does the website line need to be larger? Is the language right? So that's, that's what we're bringing this to you for today, to hear your ideas on how to proceed with the design.
And see, I would have, if that's where you're driving them to, and if you have a as-of this date, this is where we're at, and then drive them to changeforchange@leeschools.net. Because if you're driving along, looking at that, that address at the bottom in the green, it's too long and detailed. So if you, if you would put change for change or something, and then at leeschools.net. That one long line is long, and if you're driving by, you're not really going to see it. People, I will recognize www.leschools.net. And if you really understand what I'm saying, simply simpler and putting this to the top.
They are, they are hearing you. Ms., I'm going to ask, Ms. Morgan had her hand up.
Yes, I'm sort of struggling with this because it, it says, "Your tax dollars at work for student success," and, but that doesn't really tell you anything. I would rather see something more to the effect of, "Check out our investment in student seats, technology, school safety at leeschools.net," and just, you know, take out the tax dollars and everything else, and just try to give them a reason to go look at the website. I don't know. I don't, it's...
Can I say one more thing? What about a, would have to be fairly good size, but what about a QR code? That if somebody's driving by, they take a picture of it and go and take it, see it later.
Can you do a drive-by and get, and get a QR code that quick?
As long as you get the picture of it, yeah.
I'm going to have to try that one. Ms. Vaughn?
But anyway, I mean, it's just a dot.
No, yeah, no, thank you, thank you for that. I'm going to, I'm going to go to Ms. Vaughn. Ms. Vaughn?
Okay. Would you tell us again, the change for change sign? Is that the one that's the V-shaped, that's in front of the school?
Yes, this one that I'm displaying here would be in front of the school and a quick catch to say, "Here's where to go and get more information."
Okay, like out near the road or as people are walking? And what was the size again?
So on slide six, there are five of the properties laid out of the 17, and we've put a red X. So here's one at Challenger Boulevard in Winkler, at the corner of Ray V. Podorf, there'd be a sign there. At Benita Springs Middle School on West Terry Street, at Veterans Park Academy for the Arts, et cetera. So what our maintenance team did was went and looked at all of their properties, and they said, "Where do we have the best road visibility?" And of all of our campuses surveyed, they came back with 17 that has really good road frontage visibility, where a really large sign would be able to be viewed by the majority of people.
Okay, so what, the point I'm making, I think, to me, the purpose of the sign is change for change, and another key word, "Your tax dollars at work." I think maybe instead of "For student success," there might be something else, but a sign that somebody's looking at when they're driving, I mean, the purpose of that sign is not to educate people on exactly how much is being spent at that school, or did it change last week? You know, I think it's, the way it is here is perfectly logical, maybe making the website a little bigger, a little easier, but I'm just thinking about what is the purpose of the sign? And I think we're getting too detailed on, well, we can put this on the sign, and we can put that on the sign. The main thing is get them to the website, let them know that here is the place where your half penny is helping. This, that's my opinion on it. You know, with those, I've seen those lines, pickup and all, you put too much on there. I think we're going to have some fender benders out on the road or something, I mean...
These are not necessarily a parent pickup, if you look at the...
Well, no, no, I know, but just the kind of traffic that sometimes builds up in front of a school and, and that sort of thing. This is just my view on what is the purpose of this sign. It's not to give them a tome on what we've done over the years.
I would say one important thing is just to have a tickler, a reminder, "Oh, yeah, we passed that sales tax."
Yeah.
"Oh, yeah, my tax dollars are at work here. My kid, my grandkid, my neighbor's kid are benefiting from it. And if I choose, I can go look at more of it." But really, it's kind of a visual reminder of, I'm contributing to the economy here.
Ms. Fisher?
So I appreciate all the comments of my colleagues, and I just want to say that I think that we want to say, "Sales tax dollars," and I think we want to put the website on the darker color because when you're driving and you look at a sign that has light colors, white on light, it, you can't see it. And, or I can anyway, but I, I think that with the white on the darker color, it really is a lot better visibility. We might make change for change a little smaller, "Sales tax dollar at work," and then make the website address a little bigger, and...
Sounds good.
Because the goal is to get people to the website. It's got all the information anyone interested would need. So, thank you.
Good job, Ms. Fisher. It is sales tax, that's right. Sales tax is the key that we're forgetting. Ms. Gittens?
Yeah, I mean, I can take a snippet from what everyone has said individually, and I agree with it, and I'm thinking about what Ms. Rogers said, you know, what is our purpose? Is it to get them to the website? Is it to keep them mindful so that, you know, down the road, they know, you know, what we're doing? Because basically, the slide seven, I guess, you know, really, it doesn't really say anything. They know that we have a sales tax, and I agree with the fact that the green on the white, I mean, the white on the green, you can't see it. And it kind of goes back to when you were talking about the data of the people that went to the website. I, I'm wondering of the people that went, where are they at? I mean, are they mostly from a specific area, a specific demographic? And it's kind of like that, you know, plan study doing that, are we reaching the people that we want to reach? Are we reaching everyone? So it, it kind of, to me, begs the question, what is our goal? To reach everyone or a large portion of everyone or a large portion of just one demographic or near?
Dr. Burnier? Board Member Gittens, it's an excellent question and a great statement. I think there's multiple things afoot here in terms of putting signage out in the community. A lot of times, it's very easy to recognize, to use an example earlier, when Franklin Park begins its bulldozing and repair, it's very clear that we are doing major construction work. Other times, such as recently out at Lee High Senior High, that work was done in the back, that additional building. It was a lot of infrastructure work with technology. And yet, as a candidate, when I came and drove to the schools, the only thing I saw was an eight-and-a-half-by-11 piece of paper on the fence that I had to get out of my car to go read. This is really a chance, and I, I think we're hearing some really great feedback, but this is really a chance for us to tell and show our community where their dollars are being invested, to, for them to see very quickly that this is a school building being impacted by that half penny that they see every time they're in a Home Depot or a Marshalls or a Home Goods, or wherever they are. They see that additional tax on their tax receipt, and now they know that there are very specific locations where these dollars are at work. And they're at work at more than 17 sites. Seventeen sites is just where we want to get started, but we're hearing some really good feedback regarding the signage about your sales tax dollars at work, and it is an investment. And I think that is one aspect. Driving through the website would be great, but if they drive by and say, "Oh, that's a school building that my half penny is fixing." That's, that's a site where I now know that, geez, I had no idea that there was work going on inside that building because we're not building walls, we're not building additional classrooms, we're not taking off a roof, we're going in and doing really important work to life support systems like HVAC, electrical, and, and technology. Very, very hard to see from the outside. So again, it's, it's really a message to the community of thanks, but also a message to the community of, here is where your tax dollars are actually being put to work.
Thank you for that. Is there any other comments?
I have a few more slides.
Thank you. I just want to make sure they were done with that part.
Okay, so we left off at the site-specific picture. And I wanted to give kudos to Mr. Frederick Ross, who came up with a creative idea to advertise in our football programs, when our Printing Services Department creates the programs, that we should have a standard insert that all of our schools can do. And so Frederick came up with that great idea, and Mrs. Lancaster's team came up very quickly with a visual, and so we're kicking around this kind of idea and getting ready to share this with the schools and with our Printing Services Department. So football games are probably our largest sporting event, but basketball games and other events, anywhere where we have a flyer, this is, this would be a standard thing that we'd want to add. And then in addition, we're going to have for the MC at the football games to have a list, you know, of, "These are the projects at this school that were funded by the sales tax. Thank you for A, B, C, D, E." And so, reaching again, a message that I've embraced that ISOC has given us is, you're not going to drive everyone to your website, you need to meet people where they are. So the signage, the football flyer programs, the announcement at football games are some of the creative ideas we've come up with, and we are absolutely open to more ideas like that. So with that, a goal today was to have the board provide feedback on the sign design and placement at schools and provide additional information. Dr. Burnier?
Yes, ma'am. So to the point, I think if you could go back two slides to the program, there you go. I think that's a place where we could be more specific. I think that's a place where we could be more specific. We talked about 125 million in maintenance projects, safety upgrades, but we could be specific here with dollars and cents, because this is something that someone's going to have in their hands and read. I did hear very clear, clear feedback that when we look at our big sign, we want to look at the word "sales tax at work." I saw lots of heads nodding. I could not see Board Member Gittens nod her head, but I'm assuming she would be nodding her head as well. I think that's an excellent suggestion that it's your sales tax dollars at work. And specifically, we should look at the blue and the green, and we should look at maybe whether we could change some of the sizing slightly in order to create that background that does drive the visibility of those particular statements like a website. I do really appreciate and want to make it known that, really impressive that this group worked in what I refer to as in the negative. That idea of creating white type into a background is a way of creating very great visuals for people. And a lot of times, we don't do that. We put a background color, and then we tend to put a colored text over the top. By creating that white space, you really draw a person's eye in, so somebody has a real sense of marketing and what needs to be happening. And I just wanted to make sure the team got some credit for that, for that style of work, because it does draw your eye in. And as you're driving by, and we'd like to make the recommendation that people not take a photo while driving by. If they want to take a photo, please pull over and take a photo. We don't want anybody in trouble with the local police department or the sheriff's office. But to Ms. Gittens' point, I think a QR code on some of our other flyers that takes them directly to a website would be, would be of real value. I think the suggestions we got today will allow us to make some adjustments to the signage and get this up and out in our communities as quickly as possible. Thank you.
So we're done.
Do you have a chance, can I make one comment?
Yes, go ahead, Ms. Gittens.
As I'm looking at, you know, I keep talking about a number. So when you look at slide three, and what if, you know, twice a year or once a year we put as of whatever and put a sales tax result? I'm just thinking a number of some sort, and I get it, the project's changed, but if we had a generic number, like that first one, that two of it, nine of them, that gets people's attention. And it means that you have, oh, wow, so what, that much? And what if we send it off? Which will drive them to find more information about it. But a number is going to capture attention.
Thank you, Ms. Gittens. I know you heard, y'all heard that. And then I guess my question too, with the one for the sports programs, would you add the sales tax on that one as well? So that it's all the same? I guess I would think that would be... So do you have any comments regarding what Ms. Gittens, her concern in the dollars and the...
We're going to be working on a couple of different materials this summer, including the ISOC presentation. And I think that maybe the level of detail in different types of marketing materials might be a little bit different. And I think that the highway drive-by sign might have fewer details because it's going to be viewed from further away, and that, I think that the numbers definitely draw attention. And I think that for each school, what we've been talking about is maybe quarterly sending information to schools with numbers and projects at their school. And so I think that's a way to dig into the details in one or two of the types of marketing that we're pursuing.
Yeah, and I think the signs are great. I mean, four by, that's like 16 feet of signs. I mean, that's, that's long. So I think that's, that's great. It's a big, giant piece of plywood. Or whatever you use, just plywood's in my head. Is there any other, do you need anything else from us, or?
That's everything that we were hoping for today. So the, if, we'll go ahead and proceed with making some changes, working with our communications department, and proceeding with posting some of the signs and getting the written materials back to you for review and circulation.
Thank you. And I really appreciate you all doing this because I know that it's been asked for, for a minute, but I just appreciate you taking the time and doing all this, and the presentation was great. So thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Gittens, are you good? Ms. Gittens?
Yes, yes, ma'am, I'm fine, thank you. I beat the worst of them, child.
Well, they're going to, they'll get back, they're going to get back with us. So they've taken everything into consideration of what was stated here. Dr. Bernier has went over everything to make sure that it was all clearly understood, what, what we have just stated, and then they will be getting back with us. And then Dr. B, did you have any?
No, just a point of clarification. So staff will go back, they'll take a look at these particular pieces of signage, they'll make the adjustments. Our preference would be in July for us to be able to send those back to you electronically, just for any additional feedback prior to going printing, because our goal, prior to going to print, because our goal would be to get these up for the fall restart and be, be out and about in our community with the signage as quickly as possible this fall. And to the team, I have an idea about those number signs and where a good location like the main office on Colonial might be a good idea for that type of number for people to see as they drive in, as they attend our meetings, or they come in to register children. So I think there's a place for what all the board members have suggested to us today, and I appreciate your efforts in making those additional adjustments.
Wow, good gracious, look at this. This is great. So, we've accomplished a lot today, and that's what you call teamwork, everybody working together. This is beautiful. So thank you so much for all of that. And so we are now to the good of the order. And, oh, thank you for coming.
I've been watching y'all.
I'm actually going to start with, if I may, Ms. Gittens, do you have anything for the good of the order, please?
I have something to present to you from the audit committee meeting from last week. But I will be there tomorrow afternoon. After the briefing, I will present it then, if that's okay with everyone.
Yeah, that's fine, thank you. Is there anything else, though, that you want to share for good of the order, or you'll just wait till tomorrow?
No, I'll wait till tomorrow.
Okay.
It'll be easier.
And I hope you feel better.
Thank you, thanks, everyone.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes, I do have something. So on the 16th of June, I attended the Healthy Lee Steering Committee meeting, and they've been in existence for 15 years and have developed many partnerships along, around this district. And part of what we discussed was some of the work that's being done by our own Healthy Living Collaboration in partnership with University of Florida, Healthy Lee, and some other organizations. And so I would like to request that, and I already did this in writing with the superintendent and I think the people in the office, I think that I would like to see the people from the Healthy Living Collaboration present to the board and give you an update as, along with the public, about what has been accomplished, how much we are impacting food insufficiency and healthy living in this community. And you guys know, I mean, for me, mental health is part of comprehensive health, and it's all about that. And with, with the efforts that are being made and the success that our wellness program has had in saving money on insurances and things like that, I really think that this is a good time, sometime at the beginning of the next school year, for us to have that so we can encourage the continuation of these partnerships. Thank you.
Great, thank you. So, okay. Ms. Giovinelli, I'm going to come back to you, give you a second to...
Yes, can you come back?
I am.
Thank you.
That way you can get... Ms. Fong, did you have anything for the good of the order?
Sure. I just wanted to give a shout out to the team that organized the community input and feedback for the Lee County Civil Rights and Equity Guide. I have been very interested in, in this topic all along, and I've been in the, in the audience, I guess you say, watching the proceedings. The team includes the two that are really the moderators, the facilitators, I guess is a better word, for this, Mr. Chuck Bradley, Ms. Jessica Duncan. They're doing an excellent job, very well organized. The legal team is there to, and to add their expertise. All of us submitted a couple names and, for community members to participate. And it was, it was interesting. I was really surprised at how many of the individuals I actually knew. And in, in knowing those individuals, I automatically knew which side that they were on, and it's a good thing because the committee really is well-balanced committee. It's not one-sided, one particular kinds of thoughts versus others. So I'm, it's, as I said, it's been well-organized, good cross-section of our community. There's been a lot of feedback, there are a lot of Post-it notes that have been put in the parking lot and that are going to go back and be part of the process as this guide is reviewed. And the other thing is, I haven't seen any bodily injuries to anyone during this process. So, well done. That's what I wanted to say.
Thank you. Ms. Morgan?
I have nothing, thank you.
Ms. Giovinelli?
I don't, I don't really have anything, other than my apologies for coming in late, but I've been watching the meeting, and it was easier for me to watch it based, with our sound system, than, and not like I can see everything. But I do want to bring up one thing, and this is actually for the superintendent regarding the Acceleration Academy. I know that we haven't really discussed that as a board, and I think it's something we need to talk about. I'm told that the district no longer wants to proceed. And I think, I think as a board, we need to have a conversation with the superintendent because I would like to know the plan, because we've kicked this can down the road for many years, and I'm very disappointed in the fact that, that that's what's happened. Because every day that we don't talk about the Acceleration Academy, or the, the possibility for graduation, students to graduate, that's, it's a big deal for me, because that, that's what I was elected to do. That's probably the number one priority is to graduate students. And when we lose one, we failed. It's not, even just one. And I know with the pandemic, it's been a very serious situation regarding graduations. And, and then I know the governor gave, actually graduated many students that probably wouldn't have graduated in the, you know, forgiveness in 2020, but, you know, at the end of the day, not just a diploma on the piece of paper doesn't always guarantee the success of a student either. But that's the main, our main job is to do that, and then what they do with that, you know, educate those students, and what they do with that afterwards is really on them, but we need to give them the tools to get there. And I feel like that, you know, the Acceleration Academy was a good avenue to make sure that everyone graduates with a diploma. I'm not a big GED person. I know that's an option for students, but at the end of the day, I wasn't elected to make sure students get GEDs. And so I'm, I'm still going to advocate for the Acceleration Academy, and I want to hear, you know, you mentioned that you had a plan, but that plan needs to happen pretty quickly for me to be sold at this point in time, because this can's been kicked down the road so long. And I'm going to just try to leave it there, because I hear I'm talking again and saying the same thing a couple different times, and it's a couple different ways, and I'm trying to be better at that. So, thank you.
Madam Chair, may I add something to what you just said?
Yes.
That, what you just said, Ms. Giovinelli, spurred something else in, in my mind. I too have been an advocate for Acceleration Academy, and I've, I think there's some other board members that, that have been. And I did go up to Sarasota and spent a couple hours watching, and also very impressed with what they were doing. Now, I know that we have, I think it's called Graduation Academy, that's been, or something like that, that's been going on. And frankly, I don't know very much about how that operates, and I kind of heard, not, I don't think in any presentation, that that is moving to Michigan Avenue.
It's been there.
I don't know if that's, if that's true. And I kind of got the understanding, and this is, again, very unofficial, because I don't know that we've had any real board briefings on exactly how that works. And like Ms. Giovinelli, I am not a fan of a GED at all, because the students can't even go into the military with, with a GED. And for a lot of employers, just the sign that a student followed through and actually got his or her high school diploma is, is often, you know, even if it's, they will take a GED, it's like that extra checkmark for, for those people. So, yeah, I hadn't thought about Acceleration Academy in a little while. I'm glad you brought it up. And maybe Dr. Bernier can answer, is there something new being developed with Graduation Academy? Is it going to be at Michigan Avenue?
So let's begin, in all of your one-on-ones, I had a conversation with every one of you about Acceleration Academy.
Right.
And a desire to know more about the programmatic offerings that we had already.
Right.
Would never, ever say that we're never moving forward with something. I think it's a matter of understanding where the right opportunities are, once we know more about the curriculum offerings we have. Have multiple conversations with Dr. Spiro regarding Grad Academy and what the plans are, what's already underway. I'm more than happy to schedule that at a following workshop, so that that information could be shared, in terms of where it's located, what its programming does, what its early successes are, where, where we're still making different steps and different movement in terms of progress towards the goal that all of you have. I'll save my final comments for the thank you for allowing the team to go out to Palo Alto, California, and talk a little bit about the problem of practice we developed around outcomes, specifically what does a successful graduate from Lee County, the School District of Lee County, what do they look like, what are they able to do? And because that's really the outcome I've heard all of you talk about. So more than happy to talk a little bit about that, and if we wanted to reschedule an opportunity for staff to come back and talk about Acceleration Academy, we could do that.
Okay, and just to be clear, yes, I remember you saying in a one-on-one that we weren't going to be looking at Acceleration Academy this year, which is logical, because we're way too far to, into this year to get, to get that going, or for them to get it going. But on, on the other hand, I've just heard mentions of, well, we have Grad Academy, but really no details.
If I, if I may, it was Shelley Taylor, and I'm trying to remember, I can't remember the exact day that they did this, Shelley Taylor, Tammy Scott, I can't remember who else. There was another, a couple other people were here. And they spoke to us about the Grad Academy and everything that they were doing. And it is at, it is on Michigan Avenue. But I mean, we did have this conversation...
It's on there now?
Yeah, but we did have this conversation. She did bring that up, because that's, her emphasis is on making sure the students graduate. And they, she did mention the, I was just trying to go back and think of when the date was. But it was definitely, they were sitting right here in front of us and discussing it.
All right, for some reason, it's missing from my mind.
It was prior to Dr. It was, it was prior to Dr. Beebe in here, for sure. Yeah, Dr. Savage was actually up here at that time.
Well, obviously, I need a refresher, or maybe what I need to do is just go back in the videos.
Yeah.
And take a look at that, because it is.
I'll try to.
Escaped my mind totally.
I'll try to search it out, too.
Oh, it's easy enough. I can do that. Thank you.
Ms. Fisher, did you have?
Yeah, yeah. So I would like to have a presentation or get some information. I've also advocated for Acceleration Academy for several years. And, and I don't know that our Grad Academy is actually addressing all of the population that Acceleration Academy does with their program, and that we do have, you know, people who have dropped out and withdrawn, who are not graduating and really need that opportunity.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Ms. G, for bringing that up. And Dr. Bernier will bring it back to us then. Thank you. Did you have?
Just real quick, too. I had talked to Jane Goodwin, I think it is, and at the conference. And, you know, her answer to me was, you know, why reinvent the wheel?
From Sarasota.
Our, our success, they have, you know, she says the success is, is, the data is there. Great. You know, the data and the information is there. And, you know, it's just shame on us for not moving this along. And I know personally, it's not me that's not moved it along. And so I, I, I'm gonna be real, real strong on this. I'm gonna want some information quickly, because every day that we don't do something is a day a student turns 22, and they can't, then we can't help them. And right now, that's FTE money that we're not, you know, they can receive to pay for that. And we get a percentage back. And to me, that just will increase our graduation rate as well. And we have students out there that are sitting at home, don't, don't have the where-all, the be-all, neither do their parents. And to get their even a GED, much less a diploma. So if we can, and that's what the Acceleration Academy does, they go find those students that are sitting there at home, playing computer games or watching TV, and gives, it gives them the opportunity to feel better about themselves. It's, it's a whole, it's a whole outlook, you know, to have a, your diploma and to, to feel successful. It's a whole outlook that changes people's mindset and hope, and, and where they go out and, and have a better respect for themselves. And that they've lost that. And it will give them that little bit of edge to be a better person for the community that they live in. And so I'm gonna be real strong on this. I'm bringing it up as a conversation today. But if I don't see this move, a movement, I will be bringing it back up again at, at an action meeting to make a decision. Somebody needs to make a decision, and we have not made one. And so I'm, I'm given the opportunity for this board to understand where I'm coming from. And I'm not gonna be making any surprises. Everybody will know where Melissa stands. Thank you.
And I just think that, too, when bringing it up at an action meeting is your prerogative, but we also need to make sure that we have all that information prior to that. Because I know that legal had quite a bit of going back and forth with them. So that, all of that information would need to come back to us. So that way, when we do make a decision on something, we will have all of the information. So, Dr. B, when, when you do bring that back, I know that, again, this is, a lot of this stuff happened before you. But I know that our legal department was going back and forth, and there was numbers and this and that. I can't remember the whole conversation that we were all having about it. But if we could just take it all, bring it all together in one lump sum, and bring it back to us to understand, that would be great. Thank you. Sooner than.
I'd be happy to do that.
Thank you.
I mean, I'm not opposed for the Acceleration Academy to come here and, and make a presentation so that everyone can see what they bring to the table. And I've recommended that several times. And I know that they're more than willing to do that. So, and I understand there was legal, there were some legal things, but I believe that that was being emphasized from the district, wherein you've got it in Nevada, and Las Vegas itself has that, has the Acceleration Academy. It's very, doing very well in Miami-Dade. It's doing very well in St. Lucie. It's doing very well in Sarasota. It, you know, and I think it's something that we need in Lee County. I need, I want to make sure that all students graduate. And the ones we've missed, I want to capture them back and, and for them to graduate. And I, I'm gonna leave it at that, because I know, I think y'all understand where I stand on this. And, and I'm not going to sit back and, and until I'm told, until the board made, the board makes a decision, that's where I'll go. And I'll, and I'm just not making it a surprise for anybody. So.
And I think everybody has that same vision. Everybody wants, here on the board, wants everybody to graduate. So I, I think that's not a, that's not the issue at all. So we'll look forward to getting that information back to us. I think I got everybody, Ms. Gittens. Thank you. And I, I just want to say thank you, Dr. Bernier, that, for having the Equity Guide, the draft sent to us, so that way we could kind of follow. Because I know I've not been able to, to attend any of those meetings, to just listen to what has been going on. But at least I have the opportunity to read what that, the guide is, or the draft is. And I want to thank you for that. And Ms. Gittens was kicked off the line, so she's not on the line with us any longer. And, and I really, I really don't have anything. I just thank you all for working together today to get, get us through all of this. Dr. Bernier, we're looking forward to hearing your, what you've been doing in this last week. So when we, after Mr. Prey Bruno, we'd love to hear, Mr. Prey Bruno?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't have any comments. Thank you.
Okay. Dr. Bernier?
Just a couple of quick things. First and foremost, thank you for recognizing the work of the Equity Committee. I think you did an outstanding job in selecting the individuals who are participating. And they do represent a cross-section of the constituency of Lee County. And they are doing good work. I want to credit staff for the amount of effort that goes into planning those types of engagements. And there's another engagement meeting this week, which will be the first one I've had the opportunity to attend. I want to thank you all for the opportunity that you provided for me, both at the Florida School Boards Association, as well as shortly after that, the opportunity to travel to Cape Canaveral to be one of the first individuals, along with about 17 other superintendents, to look at the heavy lift rocketry organization called Blue Origin. Blue Origin is part of a very different Space Coast from the last time I've been there. Space Coast was always dominated by the military and NASA. It is now being dominated by multiple private organizations. Think of it as the Silicon Valley of Florida for space exploration. They are using a competitive model with each other. They are very proprietary. I'd love to share photographs and other things, but our phones were taken from us upon arrival, and we are not allowed to take pictures. We were allowed to take some pictures out on the launch pad. I will send one along, just about a mile zero for the destination of space. The first rocket launch, which you're probably most familiar with by people like Captain Kirk going to space in New Shepard, the new rocket model is very, very different. That was a testing of all the technology. New Glenn is larger than a Saturn V. And it'll be doing a lot of the heavy lift work, taking machinery, factories, living places into orbit, because two very different products. SpaceX is all about moving to Mars. Blue Origin is all about trying to preserve a planet that has gone from, in 48, in 48 years, from four million people to eight, sorry, four billion people to eight billion people. And in another 48 years, 16 billion people on this planet could be a sustainable issue. So that's the vision of Blue Origin, is to, how do we get people to willingly want to leave the planet, live in space, live in other places, and, and begin to do the work necessary for the blue planet, the origin of the planet, to continue to survive. What I really took from it, though, was all the space and technology and science and math kids they need. And I was just so happy, there were so many high schools, I won't name them now, but I was just so happy to do the rolodex through my head of all the kids involved in robotics, STEM, science, Microsoft World Championships. Those are the types of kids that they're looking for. And they will have an opportunity to come to Lee County and to participate with our children and talk to them about the opportunities that they have out in Cape Canaveral for science and engineering majors, post-high school and post-college graduation. So very exciting there. The other opportunity was a not, great chance to be in Orlando with our principals for the kickoff to the PLC Conference. Thank you very much for that investment in them. They were heavily into this work prior to the pandemic of developing professional learning communities with their teachers and staff, which is part of that culture issue that all of you have had, talked to me about. The principals were treated as amazing professionals. The Professional Development Department deserves all sorts of kudos, along with some members of our HR team, who not only managed to get them all there, get them all hotel rooms, get them to a conference, but keep them focused with a Lee County hour just about every day, where we're able to pull them together after the conference and talk about what was transpiring. Finally, last week, as you know, the Carnegie Institute asked us, as one of nine districts across the country, to participate in a large-scale, long-term project about re-envisioning what American education and what the outcomes for American education can be. It's so interesting, the conversation about Acceleration Academy from the aspect of, we had a very in-depth conversation regarding the outcomes of a public school system, and what does a successful graduate look like now and into the future. And not just from a business perspective, but from a parental perspective, from a teacher's perspective, and probably most importantly, from a student's perspective. It's a very complicated issue, but one that we will be invested in with the Carnegie, with Carnegie's support. And they announced at the conference for the next three years. They're willing to put this effort behind these school systems for the next three years, to develop these outcomes and make sure that we, we do that. And I just find it oddly serendipitous that we were talking about the importance of every student graduating from high school, literally over the last two days. And we talked about the numbers that don't. When you look at a 95% graduation rate amongst our traditional high schools, that 5% represents a number. That is a number of young people that need to be serviced. And I'm thankful to bring back the conversation and, and looking forward to talking about that some more. Finally, it would be remiss if I didn't tell you, I will remind the public again tomorrow night at the action meeting, that this will also be the week where test scores and information from the state, prior to the July 1 deadline, that information will be provided from the state in raw format. Dr. Matthew Kay is already fully prepared. We had a great meeting again this morning with, in preparation of that data release. So we will have that information, and we will get you information as quickly as I get it. It will get to all of you, so we can look at not just third grade reading scores, but we can look at the entire situation. Keep in mind, grad rate will be later in the fall. That, that doesn't get released at this point. There's still a lot of other data work that has to be done with that before the state releases it. So we'll get an early look at how our students have moved through the pandemic by the end of the week. That's it for me.
Thank you. Okay. See ya. No other business. That was the last of the Good of the Order. This meeting is adjourned, and it is 3:00 o'clock. Thank you so very much.